Okay. We're here. Okay. It is 6:30. We will call the meeting to order and note that we do have a quorum. This is Tuesday, July 3rd at 6:30, the regular Planning Commission meeting. And our first item of business is to approve minutes from previous meetings. And we have five sets of minutes, and I do believe we must treat them individually. Is that true? One at a time?
If they're different...
Different dates?
Different dates and different people who were here.
Okay.
That probably has to do with it.
Well, then we'll just do one at a time.
Everyone can vote on the minutes.
No consensus. All right. The approval of the minutes from April 17th, 2018 is, we will now consider. Any comments or corrections for April 17th?
Madam Chair, I have corrections marked. They're essentially just spelling errors. They don't go to the substance of the minutes.
Okay.
So I propose that I don't read those changes, but that I provide them to the planning folks to make the corrections. If we can just perhaps...
These are just minor spelling grammar kinds of things?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. Would you like to make a motion to approve them with your corrections?
Yes. I move to approve the minutes from April 17, 2018 with the corrections that I will provide to the planning department people.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Chaffin will second the motion. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. The next set of minutes is from Tuesday, May 1st.
Move to approve the minutes from Tuesday, May 1st.
I second. I second.
Okay. Mrs. Woman seconds the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Motion carries. My next set of minutes is from Tuesday, May 15th. Any corrections? Someone who is here would like to make a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from Tuesday, May 15th, 2018 as presented.
Mrs. Woman makes the motion. Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Miller seconds the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. The next set of minutes is Tuesday, June 5th. Any corrections? Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
Mr. Saul makes a motion to approve. May we have a second? I will second the motion. All those in favor of approving June 5th?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Motion carries. And the final set of minutes is from Tuesday, June 19th. Can we have a motion to approve them unless there are corrections?
So moved.
Mrs. Woman makes the motion to approve, and we'll have Mr. Miller make the second of all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Motion carries. Okay. We have one item on the agenda for this evening. Case number P-17-015, Muggie Farms subdivision, preliminary platte. And presenting from the county is Molly O'Kild Larson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Molly O'Kild Larson, Senior Planner with the Public Works Department. The county attorney has reviewed the public notice and has determined that the applicant has met all the notice requirements thereby establishing jurisdiction. What's before you this evening is Muggie Farms preliminary platte. The applicant is Muggie Farms LLC. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of North Kiowa Bennett Road and E6 Avenue. This application proposes to subdivide 314 acres into 16 19-acre lots for single-family residential development. Staff recommends approval based on the findings of the staff report. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer at this time.
I have one question.
Sure.
In the letter from the engineering service company, it said that this is unallowed as a use by right. Could you explain what that means?
For single-family residential, yes. Under that zone district, single-family residential is allowed use.
So it's not a zoning change?
No. It's A1 zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Chaffin?
Could you talk a little bit about the water?
Sure. The applicant did do a lot of research, reached out to the state water engineer. They do have the ability to drill wells, and I believe there's three different levels and that they could drill down into one of those and obtain their water. So they have satisfied that for showing proof of water.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Then I'm going to turn it over to the applicant, and he has a presentation for you.
Hello. My name is Dan Watson. I represent Muggie Farms, which is basically my family. The land is held in that LLC. I don't know if I really have a presentation as much as I can give you a little bit of a history of the land. This ground was bought, I believe, back in 1972 by my great uncle Charles Muggie. That's where the name came from. And it is, the entire time I've known of this ground, it's just been used as dry wheat or soybean farm, farmland. And at this point, my family has just decided that we are interested in selling. And so just looking at the zoning and looking what was available, we felt that this was a good use for the property and especially just given that it does have access on both sides by paved roads. And if, I don't know if you've been out there, it seems like it has great views of the mountains. So we just feel that this is an appropriate use for the property.
Any questions?
Are these others, are these other homes that are on these landing strips, are to, I guess, the east, is that something you did as well?
No. I believe that's the Pauls Brothers', and those are 35-acre lots. And I believe they did that so that they wouldn't have to go through the plating process. And I know that the lot just to the east of our ground, I was actually here for that approval, that's where you guys approved a boarding facility, a dog kennel. And I've been out there, and she has a house up, and I guess she had to have a house up, and then you put the boarding kennel in. So our lots are a bit more narrow. Other than the four along Kiowa Bennett, we wished we could have made them all more of a square in shape, but this is just how they needed to lay out and to meet the requirements.
So can you make them more square? I guess when I look at these and I look at everything that's being developed out there anymore, this seems like a very quick and easy way to just plot it out. And it's, and I don't know, I can't see where, I mean, I guess people are buying these? I guess what my question is.
Well, I believe so. And just given the configuration, this is the best that we could do to get the 19-acre lots, to fit it within that is to have the four along Kiowa Bennett. I just wanted to, I recognize that those are 330 feet wide, so I kind of just view that as a football field in width. And I think if there is one benefit of bringing them down from 35 to 19 acres, though, I think people will find that it's easier to maintain. I've just heard things with the 35-acre lots that sometimes people get in a little over their head when they get out there and they realize what 35 acres is. So they're not, I will admit that I wouldn't say that they're the ideal size, but given that we met what the regulations were, I think the benefit would be that it's less acreage for someone to maintain while still, that's what they want. You know, they want to come out and have some acreage.
And what about the abandoned wells and pipeline?
The wells have been plugged and abandoned. The, actually, there is, as far as we know, there is no pipeline in there. It is simply an easement. That is something, though, that we're very conscious of. We will, you know, before that lot is sold, we will definitely go out there and find out for sure if there is a pipeline in there. But as far as we know, there is not. We've contacted the oil company and tried to have that easement actually vacated, and it's, that's been a process in its own, trying to get ahold of them and to do it. I think they just really, they just prefer to hold on to that easement since it's there. But if, with that lot, we will definitely, you know, as the seller, we will make sure that the buyer knows that that easement is there, and we will hire a service to go out there and mark it out and determine whether or not there is a pipeline in there. There's actually, potentially, there's an easement out there that really even shouldn't be in there, and that's the one running south. It looks like there's one, it starts at the north and then it runs down, and then it looks like it kind of attaches on there. That was one that, I don't even think there's a written easement for it, but the oil company may or may not have put one in it sometime, so we will find out about that, let the buyer know, and just make sure, you know, we don't want anyone building a home over an easement or if there is a pipeline there that's been, that's no longer used, we want them to know that.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns? I guess I was, I guess I'd like to make a comment. And I guess if you don't, we need to open the public hearing. Is anybody here that would like to speak to this development? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission. I was concerned with the statement that this proposal goes against the work we did on the comp plan regarding the urban reserve. I realize the lots to the east of this are the same configuration, but I have Randall's, I agree with Randall that the shape and size of the lots, I, long-term, I guess I wish there were fewer lots so they could be configured differently. And we spent a lot of time discussing the urban reserve and where things should be located, and Julio isn't here to explain how much time we spent on that. So while it meets the intent, I just feel like we're violating some of the things that we already agreed to. I also am concerned about the use of aquifers. I thought we had agreed that, I don't know if there's going to be recycling of water there, but that we really were not in favor of drawing down the aquifers to provide water. And in February, we changed it from 100 to a 300-year supply, and I guess I'm not sure if this really meets that requirement. And drawing down three different aquifers makes it, but Randall might know more about...
I actually don't. But I mean, I'm with you on that. That's why I keep looking at this going, we, I've seen these lots go in, and I'm just not certain that they are in, I mean, they might meet the balance, you know, they might meet what the regulations are, but I don't know that it meets the spirit of what we were trying to do. And it just ends up with these really narrow strips, and there's no community to them, there's no...
And in 10 years, what do we have?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Well, those are my concerns. So could we go back to the Planning Commission and ask them why they are recommending approval of the staff? Yeah. And what the considerations were in terms of, oh, what's on the comp plan and what's coming before us?
Yes, I can address that. Molly O'Kild Larson, Senior Planner. I did talk with Alan on our staff that worked extensively on that, the comprehensive plan with Julio. And I did say, you know, it is in the urban reserve, and I know the goal is this, but yet they have the zoning for 19 acres, minimum 19 acres. And he said, yeah, we would, you know, we'd like to see that, but we can't prevent somebody from, if they have the zoning, to go in and develop this type of lot. So that's the answer I got.
It's allowed?
It's allowed, yes, it is.
Well, then I guess I'm going to hang my hat on, there are too many lots, and I don't like the configuration, and I don't like using the aquifers.
And then I did have Larry Muller on our staff review the letter from the state engineer, and he did say that it was sufficient for them to pull water, and the state would...
What kind of horizon?
They can use, I guess, three layers is what they were telling me, three different aquifers that they could potentially drill into.
Any other questions or concerns?
The wastewater treatment that was discussed, can you speak to that a little bit? I mean, how would that, I guess, be organized across this number of lots if that was something that, obviously, it's been a comment, you know, I saw that in your studies? So would it be a centrally located facility, and then everything came up? Just if you can explain a little bit more about how that would be enabled?
Okay. Tri-County Health would issue the permits, and it would be for individual septic systems on the property. There's sufficient amount of land there, and they said that it was a doable task to put septic on that, at that location with those lots.
And they're aware of how narrow those lots are?
Yes.
Instead of a septic system or a leach field?
Yes. There's plenty of room. Is it two and a half acres is the...
Bear in mind, they're 19-acre lots of lots. So there's going to be quite a lot of room for leach beds and septic. And I'm just going to speculate on the water, but zoning was only going to permit single-family, one single-family residence per lot. And so that is going to be, what, 16?
Houses, yeah.
Houses, which would be drawing water as opposed to 300 houses in a subdivision.
So they would have to come back if owners wanted to subdivide again and get variances, essentially.
Right. Lengthy configuration.
Right. Right. And their access, that's right, and the access to those, you know, unless a builder bought up all of them at some point and provided access roads in the interior and approval for a development down the road.
Probably it'd have to come in and reconfigure the property.
Yeah.
And can we ask for it to be reconfigured now and get it out of this narrow 19-foot?
You can propose, you know, whatever you feel is appropriate for this plan.
Yeah. I guess I would suggest that you would prove it, deny it, or prove it with conditions. And I would suggest you don't get too far into designing this.
No, I don't want to.
Any other questions for Molly? Any other concerns? And how you want to move forward? Okay, Mr. Miller. You're on.
Yeah. I just said I don't know. That's why I was trying to find out. I would, I mean, I would, can we make them a provision to have it re-plotted?
So you're saying that you would move to approve it if it were reconfigured?
Aye.
Or are you turning it down?
Denial, yeah. Yeah. You either would need to make a recommendation for approval with conditions or make a recommendation for denial, that you need to specify findings for that recommend, oh, yeah, that recommendation of denial. So what your basis is for recommending denial, given that it meets the requirements of the zone district that's already in place.
Just to help you out, there, for preliminary plats, the approval standards are in section 14-202, and there's basically six or five of them. One is evidence that made for public water supplies, adequate evidence for public water supply in terms of quantity, quality, and dependability for the type of subdivision proposed, which goes to the size and how much is being drawn. The applicant has provided evidence that provision is made for public sewage system, disposal, and if other methods are proposed, adequate evidence the system will comply with state and local laws. They fall into that other systems, and apparently Tri-County Health doesn't have an issue, but they would look at each particular system design for each lot and make sure that it meets that. But I think they feel from a general engineering perspective that they can do that, provided they do it according to the existing regs. See, the applicant has provided evidence show that all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards or requiring special precautions, have been identified and that the proposed use of these areas are compatible with such conditions. I'm not sure if there's anything to that. Soils are hazardous, topography, and I guess I'm not. Is it in compliance with the zoning regulations, which it is? And is it in compliance with mineral resource areas in the regulations for areas of special interest, which are the county 1041 regulations? And to my knowledge, there's no mineral resource area designation for this area.
And the mineral owners were notified of this hearing, so, or yes.
So let's go around here. We've got the same thing going on to the east. The same thing going on southwest.
To the north.
Same thing going on over here. Right. And over there. Those sides. So what is this? What is due north?
It's basically, there's one oil and gas, I guess, well site. And then it's just pretty much open use, agricultural use. And then the one that's kind of on the northwest corner, that weird shape, almost kind of like a rectangle with the truck taken out, I type, I believe there's a house.
It's a what?
I think a house. Can you turn it on, Julio?
So this area to the east.
I have to stick with the left.
Can you wrap a map on yours?
Yeah. All those are it.
Okay. So talk to me.
It's just, it's, and even a lot of the land to the east is still unsold. So, I mean, there's a few homes going in, but, you know, the feedback I get from a lot of the community is that these are just being done and that they're, the way that they're just kind of an eyesore. And there's a lot of the, you know, people out there that just don't really care for the way that these strips are driving. So I'm just trying to figure out if there's anything that we can do to prevent the whole, you know, landing strip thing happening.
Right.
Because it doesn't make for very, very useful land, even after you buy it.
Right.
Because it's, because they're just kind of narrow and long. So you're right, there's not a lot that they can be done with it afterwards. So, and, you know, you can't, I mean, not that anybody's looking to, you know, split their property, give them one day acres they can give for animals or whatever, but it just seems to, like I say, that some of the folks that are closer to Strasburg, I've heard them talk about these strips going in. Yes, it's just people from the country or from the city coming out and buying what they think is land, but it ends up not being very useful just because of how narrow it is.
Okay. So the land is not as useful when it's in a narrow strip? It's an eyesore. People in the community consider it somewhat of an eyesore.
I mean, if it is what it is, then, you know, I guess we don't really have much that we can change on it, but I think it ends up, it ends up, you know, not really creating a community as if, you know, there was a road that was put in and it was divided in a different manner. So, and this is just easier to do because there is already road access, and there's, you can just put up, you can just put up a, you know, a covert and a bell box, and you're in, you've got everything that we developed, so.
Right. So sometimes they're going to have this sort of located at the same position on the lot because of the access to the road. So then you have a row.
So instead of being a row of homes.
A row of homes.
Most of them are row of homes out there.
Yeah.
As long driveways.
Yeah.
That are tough to deal with.
And I realize it's duplicate of almost of what's there.
Yeah.
But the lot size is substantially different.
Right. It's a larger, I mean, it's...
35 acres versus...
Versus 19.
19.
Right. How have those lots, the ones that have been developed adjacent, how quickly have those sold? I mean, do you have any sense of that?
I drove by it the other day and just looked, and there's homes being built.
Right.
I mean, you know, there's a home for everybody.
To the east?
Yeah, the ones to the east.
Okay. The Pauls homes.
Yeah. So they are being developed, but most of them are still undeveloped. So from what I could, you know, tell, they're still being undeveloped.
Well, I value your opinion because you live out there. I mean, I've been out there, but you probably see things differently.
So unless we can do something in the code, I mean, yeah, I don't know that we have much there other than it's, you know, what was the spirit of it versus what's to the God of it?
And if it doesn't turn out to be houses, what else might it be?
I don't know.
Well, I'm with you on the lot configuration, even if it's allowed, I just, I don't see it as positive totally. Any other comments? You know, I struggle with this because we sit here on the Planning Commission, and we're supposed to be very thoughtful about, we're supposed to be very thoughtful about the future and the look of communities and how things are developing, and especially along this Sixth Avenue road, which is going to be a major thoroughfare out there. And then if all of a sudden you have, you know, however many driveways headed onto Sixth Avenue, which is supposed to be a major county thoroughfare out there eventually, I think that's a concern. And I guess if we're going to do our jobs in a thoughtful way, in this vision that we had when we put together the comp plan and this look at the urban reserve, I just, this thought of, you know, nothing but a zillion driveways going on Sixth Avenue out to however where it ends, it just, that's a little bothersome for me. Two, I would add that to the mix. And I think that that is a concern with what we've talked about in terms of future development out there and the role that Sixth Avenue is going to play.
going to play out in that area.
But it's approved under, it's allowed under zoning?
Well, just because something's allowed doesn't always mean it's right. So I'm just going to add, throw that out there.
Okay, so anybody prepared to? Is there anything else we'd be thinking about?
Zoning doesn't address the lot shape, just really the size.
The plat is addressing the shape.
It's the plat that addresses the shape, so.
The, the zoning does govern a minimum lot width, as well as a minimum lot size. But if, if you have lots that are very deep relative to the, you get this sort of odd configuration.
Well, I guess I think it would be more, I'm going to say more better, that's not very good grammar, but if there had been fewer lots, fewer lots. I find them for out there, and I'm with what both of you have said, long-term, what, what is this, and I, I have many concerns. Does anybody feel like they can make a motion in any fashion? Mrs. Chauvin?
Find the page. In the case of P seventeen dash zero one five, New Deep Arms preliminary plat, I make a motion to deny the application for the following reasons. Even though this is correct on the zoning, the traffic on, I move to deny in its present configuration.
Thank you very much.
This is why we have an attorney sitting right here. In, in, for several reasons. One is the traffic on Sixth Avenue and the future development of Sixth Avenue as a major thoroughfare out in this area. The thought of multiple driveways opening onto Sixth Avenue is not an ideal situation, and I think it's a potentially dangerous situation down the road that will have to be addressed. I am concerned about the development of the urban reserve and the attractiveness of the urban reserve to its residents, and the future of development of the communities out there. And I think that's it. Would someone like to amend the motion? I'm sorry, I'm not doing this very well, folks. I stepped up, so.
Go ahead.
Well, I guess we can move to amend, just stating the following conditions. So there are, in this present configuration, we have concerns relating to future traffic control, designed to enhance the urban, help me with the word here.
Reserve vulnerability of the...
Right, the, the urban, urban reserve. It's not philosophy, it's what our client, yeah, might, might limit in the future. And I think that's probably covers it all.
I think so. Okay, does everybody understand the motion?
Yeah, that was cobbled together. Port Jan, you want to read that back?
Is, is that an amendment to the application?
It's, yeah, it's a mo-, yeah, I guess it's a modification, or it'd be, yeah.
Stated much better.
Not, not really.
I can add, Jason pointed this out. Under chapter fifteen of the Design Principles and Standards for Subdivisions, fifteen dash two oh four point oh one requires that the size, shape, and orientation of lots shall be appropriate to the location of the proposed subdivision and to the type of development contemplated, and that the lot shall provide an adequate buildable area, which these do, but the size, shape, and orientation shall be appropriate to the location. And I think what you're trying to get at goes to this particular section.
Yes. Okay, we have the motion explained and amended and made more beautiful, do we?
We don't, however, have a second.
Oh, I'm kidding, I was going to ask, do we have a second for the motion?
A second?
Mr. Muller seconds for motion. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Are there any further announcements?
No, we're waiting for the committee to begin.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I didn't do it very well. Thanks for making my thoughts a little fair for me. It's like, I know what I feel, but I don't, I can't, I can't do anything on a feeling. Well, that's what I'm trying to get to, and it's like, these homes are in these strips out there, and some of the people have complained, so it's like...
Thank you, so, and thank you.